Uh, I think it's January 25th. Uh, first on the agenda is review and approval of minutes for January 11th. Got a motion to approve?
Can you move the motion over?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
All for approval?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is public hearings. Uh, need a motion to approve public, opening public hearing for Mohawk Preserve.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the public hearing for Mohawk Preserve is open. Is anybody who wishes to come up first and just give it to the chairman?
Uh, there has been a new submission, uh, fairly extensive. Talking to the applicant's attorney, that's good that they made it up to provide a brief outline of the what you got.
Want to come up?
Sure, we'd be glad to do that. So as Mr. Lindtow was saying, uh, the preserves had an opportunity to gather the input of the planning board's consultants and historic preservation commissions and consultants.
Let me use the microphone again.
Preserve is, I'm Glenn Hogan, Executive Director of the Preserve. And, uh, we've, through the course of these public hearings and public information sessions, uh, and the planning board's input and that of your consultants and that of the Historic Preservation Commission and their consultant, um, we've been able to make some changes to the plan, which we think are improvements, response to some of the concerns that have been raised. And we can submit on Wednesday, January 20th, a set of refinements to our application. I realize that's not a lot of time and maybe not all the members of the board have had a chance to thoroughly review them, so we, we understand that. Um, but, um, you know, at its heart, this, this is a land conservation project. The Preserve acquired 857 acres identified by the town as the number one priority for open space in the town of New Paltz. It will be managed by a nonprofit conservation organization, um, that has a model. Our model really is a responsible and active land management and stewardship of the land. That involves rangers and trailhead assistants who meet and greet the visitors and, uh, respond to emergencies and problems on the land. Conservation scientists and citizen naturals, volunteers who record and observe habitats and engage in plans and projects to protect habitats. And environmental education and interpretation for families, adults, and schoolchildren. So, we, we do all this, um, you know, in a, in a way that engages and welcomes the visitors to the Preserve, onto the land. And in order to do that, we need to find a way to find appropriately scaled, safe, and, uh, well-sighted off-road parking. Uh, right now, the property is being visited, but there's a lot of roadside parking that we feel is growing in, um, its impact on our neighbors and growing in its problems associated with roadside safety and aesthetics. And so that is really the goal of this plan, is to have active management, appropriately scaled parking for trailheads, for visitors to enjoy the land, get on the land, and be inspired by it. And also to, um, to use those trailhead lots as we do elsewhere on the Preserve to welcome members, to become members, and pay visitors to pay a day fee, which helps partially defray our conservation costs as a nonprofit organization. So, um, the two main changes you'll see in the plans are shown over on the white, um, uh, blueprints, if you will. And the first is to the oval parking. And I also want to make sure I introduce Ted Kalinkowski from Barton and LaJudas and Dan Rourke, um, project engineer and traffic engineer, who are here tonight to follow up on my short presentation with any technical points or questions. So we have made some changes to the 90-car parking lot at the testimonial gateway recommended primarily by the Historic Preservation Commission and their consultants. So we've added, uh, we've actually moved one of the vault toilets, the rudderless bathrooms, to the, uh, east, to the right side of the parking area that transitions from the end of the oval towards the testimonial gateway. And we've done that to mitigate any viewshed impacts of, you don't want to be looking towards the testimonial gateway and be looking past or over a bathroom. So, uh, that was a really good design, uh, change, we thought. And, um, then we also added more plantings to the continuous barrier there so that when people get out of their cars there, they won't be able to beeline it right to the stone testimonial gateway structure. Uh, they'll, they'll have to walk around, take a nice gentle stroll around it in either direction. And that, again, is part of the, the ambiance of the, the gateway experience we're trying to create there. Where you see the structure, it's revealed, and then it's concealed as you drive west on 299, and you come into the trailhead parking area, and again, it's revealed to you. And then you travel to it on the path, then again reveals it. So, uh, we think those changes are, are really good. Um, the second changes we've made are to the small secondary trailhead to the west at the Hasbrook area. And, um, that is, uh, the old New Paltz to Warson, New Paltz and Warson Turnpike. It was an 1856 toll road, first private road, first road over the mountain was actually a private toll road. It then became a public road in 1860. And, um, has now, most of it has been subsumed by sections of Route 299 and Route 4455, as it is 20 miles over the mountain. But this is actually a remnant section that we have the opportunity to preserve and interpret. So there's about a 2,000 linear foot section from Butterville Road at Lenity Lane all the way down to the, uh, to this area that will be preserved as a grass, really a trail, a grass-covered trail, stabilized grass trail, the old road bit. And that will be interpreted through historic panels, describing the history of this old road. As far as we know, although there are some other remnant sections, including the West Traps parking lot at the Mohawk Preserve, which used, um, a section of the old road for our 130-car lot. And, um, but this will be the only one that's really preserved and interpreted for the public and not, um, still a road or, uh, used by all and basically pedestrian and bicycles only and skaters and horses back. What we've also done is pulled the parking lot to the east, um, so that it's no longer a cul-de-sac of that section of the old Warson Turnpike that over the last 136 years has been a residential driveway to the Hasbrook Pass, which was built in 1890. And that section became driveway in, um, in 1890. It was probably also still a public road at that time. But, um, rather than a cul-de-sac which sort of ends it and hinges on the historic road, we're pulling the, the trailhead, the 10-car lot to the east. Um, we also are adding a, uh, we, we heard the concerns of the public about, um, horse trailer parking potentially presenting a conflict at the oval, at the testimonial gateway. And so that's one of the voluntary adjustments we've made, is brought horse trailer parking, um, to this lot and eliminated it in the, um, in the 90-car lot. And, um, that will, we think, will relieve congestion, should there be any, on the old Oak Alley, uh, from the historic, uh, uh, testimonial gateway. And give the horse pedestrians a more rural setting from which to disembark, um, into the Mohawk Preserve foothills. Um, other, some other voluntary concessions is that, um, we, um, well, we're prepared to present tonight, um, is in essence, a peak day parking management plan. And, um, this is really a plan that reflects how we currently operate our four trailheads and how we would operate this trailhead as well. And it also includes some pictures of July Saturday, on beautiful weather at 1:00 PM, of our, our busiest trailhead. And you'll see how we manage parking and ingress, egress at that busiest trailhead, the West Traps. And those pictures taken on July Saturday. Um, as part of the River to Ridge Trail that is proposed by OSI, we have agreed to allow about 1.1 miles of a loop surrounding broken pine farms. The area, the public really does like to walk a lot on that. Um, and have had the opportunity to courtesy of the Smilys for the last 100-plus years. Um, that road, together with Pine Road, which is already a public road, that loop will now be a free public loop as part of the River to Ridge Trail. So long-distance bikers who are coming out from the village or the flats, will be able to go up, in the foothills, around the foothills, around the farms, and down without having to pay a day fee or membership to the Preserve. So that's about 1.1 miles of free trails that's been introduced to this project. Um, let's see. The, there was a third area of this project that we haven't talked a lot about or focused on at the planning board, which is what we call the upper farm pond site, the planning of farm. And that was an education lean-to and a major plank walkway that were gone to this man-made farm pond. We decided to eliminate that entirely from the site. Um, it, it would have involved slopes in excess of 15 percent. It would have involved a wetlands permit. And that was just to create a small education note for outdoor education. We feel that, um, given that the marshland elements will really, uh, provide that education experience and facilities we need, that we could really remove that from the plan and reduce the scope of the project. Um, there will also be no vault toilet or no lean-to at that location, those will just be eliminated from the plan. And we are currently, as, um, directed by the planning board, uh, we are, um, in consultation with multiple agencies about an emergency access plan. Um, haven't finalized that process yet, but that plan will emerge and will be on its way to you. So, um, we did submit earlier this week, uh, some other supplemental information, uh, along with our plan, and, um, that was on how we do events at the Preserve. Um, where we do events at the Preserve, and that they, this, this new location will not be a locus for events, uh, any kind of major events, other than Preserve-sponsored mission-related programs and events. Um, we also submitted, um, information on our, our annual gear management program. Uh, again, the testimonial gateway in particular is not hunted currently, and the only area that's hunted in foothills is, um, around, um, in the, within Glendale East currently. And, um, so you'll see how, how that works in that information we provided. And last but not least, we provided information on the design and maintenance and installation of our vault toilets for waterless bathrooms, is what it's called, and some specifications and, um, further information on those. So, um, I understand they're, they're made to withstand a 120-mile wind load, a category four earthquake, and a 350-pound snow load. So they really are substantial bounds. With that, um, I, I will just turn it over to Ted and Dan if there's any other further information.
Thank you. All right. I think Glenn covered a lot of the details of the information. Um, to really refine the site plans on behalf of the village to reflect these changes, um, some of the refinements were to more clearly illustrate the design intentions of the Preserve. Uh, respond to some things we heard in public hearings. Uh, some of them were comments we heard from the planning board, and one set from the Historic Preservation Commission in coordination with them. Um, and also some changes in the plans for the River to Ridge Trail, which we need to respond to in the set of plans. Uh, just to walk through some of the documents, um, the memorandum that Glenn was speaking about is attached to the cover letter in the package. And in addition to that, we have a kind of punch list of some of the consultant comments that we addressed in the new set of plans. Um, we expanded the number of plan sheets that helps more clearly illustrate how some of the, the sites fit into the context of the foothills and also, uh, better illustrates how the sites relate to one another. Um, we also have the detailed sheets, which are kind of along this wall. Uh, you'll notice a lot of changes and updates to that, which really kind of refine what the image of the Preserve is for the project. It shows a lot more detail about some, some of the signage and other, um, amenities that are going to be at all of the sites. Um, it also has some sizing and contextual information. We also provided updates to the Threatened and Dangerous Species Report. Uh, the Wetlands Alignation Report, uh, was updated, as well as the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. And those were all kind of in response to some of the other changes, uh, some of the changes in the site plan for the Historic Preservation Commission and again for the River to Ridge Trail alignment. Um, it's important to look at these plans and, and keep in mind that the intent is to provide managed access so the site can be preserved. Uh, to that goal, the Preserve's been following their standard practice, and Glenn has talked about some of the additional information that's been submitted. Um, to that, to, um, implement what they've successfully and safely implemented, so, for managed open space systems. With the managed trailheads where visitors get off the street and into the site so they can experience the Preserve. Uh, the location of these two trailheads was carefully considered. At the Gate House, the entrance was placed in what was observed to be the safest location, um, to access the most proven site that was selected for parking and trail access. Uh, one of the things that happened over the summer, as you know, the town GPW completed maintenance work of a maintenance area that was brought to their attention by the Preserve. Uh, not only will it make the entrance into the project safer, but it makes the intersection of Gate House Road, 299, Jacob's Lane, 299 safer. Um, the Preserve also proposes to make some changes to the intersection of Lenity Lane and Gate House Road, eliminating that informal parking area, realigning that intersection created T and replacing what was that informal parking area of landscaping. Uh, another change will be made at the old Warson Turnpike intersection. It'll also be relying to a safer T-style intersection. And that new intersection will be regraded on both sides to give, uh, clearer site distance for ingress and egress. Uh, finally, there was a request by the planning board to investigate some of the accidents which went well beyond the scope of the foothills project, um, all the way to the Carmel River Bridge. Uh, we were able to get the information from the county and summarize what we found in the memo. And with that, I'll turn, uh, the presentation over to Dan Rourke, our Managing Transportation Engineer.
So, um, so like I said, um, we submitted two supplemental analysis to the original traffic or transportation study that was done. Uh, supplemental accident analysis and a traffic sensitivity analysis. I'll just go through, um, some of the summary finer points of the data that we collected in the beginning. Uh, the additional accident study was completed for five years during May 2010 to May 2015 for Route 299 from Jenkins Road to Carmel River Bridge. Over that time period, 142 accidents were in the 299 corridor. Um, let's break that down, it's about 28 per year over that stretch. Um, the major contributors, 38 percent were animal-related, that was the high, um, that's 54 total. Uh, 29 total or 20 percent were with fixed objects like wet holes, uh, utility holes, vibra. Uh, 18 or 13 percent of their attention were rear ends. 11 or 8 percent were right angle collision. Out of those 143 resulted in injuries, two serious injuries, there was no fatalities. Um, three of the accidents involved bicyclists. Um, from the 299 data of the 142 accidents, we found clusters of accidents that were located at four intersections. Butterville Road, Gate House Road, Desertville Road, and Springtime Road. Um, Butterville Road had 29 accidents. Gate House Road intersection at 10, Lundy Road at 6, and Springtime Road at 16. Um, the accident rate of the four roads is going to be higher than the statewide average for similar facilities. Um, the project overall will increase daily traffic volumes on 299 by about 213 percent. So all things relative, um, you'd be deduced that the number of accidents would be increasing, so blunt amount, but, um, since it's a rate, an accident rate, the actual rate of the four will not change. Um, we also completed a traffic sensitivity analysis at the request of the planning board. Um, sensitivity analysis was, uh, completed to compare impacts, cumulative impacts of Hampton Inn, the CBS Five Guys, and Wildberry Lodge Development Project. Um, we extrapolated from their traffic studies, the traffic volumes that they would project out through 299 corridor of the Mohawk Preserve. Um, the results of that, we heard that there were no significant impacts from these developments on the study area, and it does not change anything that we've already presented in our original traffic study.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Rice Barzak, I live in Garder. Um, I have a comment about traffic studies, having a look at the one here, that it measures, um, actual traffic accidents, but it doesn't talk about near misses. I was on Washington Road last week looking for a house, going slowly, and, uh, I slowed down to look at a mailbox number and a pickup truck behind me just about didn't. So, uh, already, uh, the last traffic study, there's been unusual number of hits, but there's no way to measure near misses. And, uh, the roads around here are scenic, as I said, you can't look, you have to look at the, the road. So, uh, local people know the roads, so they're direct route. And, uh, our tourists don't know the roads, so they're after getting in trouble. So I think, uh, traffic studies have to be looked at that way. They're only part of the problem with traffic, uh, are the ones that the police have to come and take down and move. And the second thing, uh, speaking of near misses, is under that footbridge on Butterville Road, it's supposedly two-lane, but it isn't. Uh, I almost got hit by a pickup truck pulling, uh, something that was wider than the pickup truck. So I don't know if you're the one who would, uh, ensure that that's labeled as a one-lane overpass, I guess it would be, uh, because it really is two-lane. So again, I just want to point out that, uh, traffic accidents are only part of what you need to think about with any project. You need to think about how many people manage not to get each other. Uh, well, you know, deer, we've all missed a deer, or deer missing us, uh, and then sometimes we can't miss them. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, to the planning board. Uh, my name is Erwin Struber. I'm at 142 Brentwood Road, New Paltz, New York, 12561. What I'm about to present is having to do with the, uh, composition of the, uh, planning board relative to the Mohawk Preserve matter of the planning board at this time. Two chairmen, Calamano and members of the town, New Paltz Planning Board. This is a request for the refusal of Michael Zeeler from voting on the question of the hiring of the Mohawk Preserve to undergo a full environmental impact statement for the reasons outlined below. The New Paltz Village Board has voted unanimously to endorse Mohawk Preserve's proposed foothills project and to recommend to the New Paltz Town Planning Board that an environmental impact statement is unnecessary. Michael Zeeler, Chair of the New Paltz Village Planning Board, has been designated by the New Paltz Village Government Conservative's representative and liaison to the New Paltz Town Planning Board to formulate a unified town-village master plan. The general objective of the town-village coordination, uh, for a master plan is indeed admirable. The request for Mr. Zeeler's refusal in deliberating and voting on Mohawk Preserve's proposal is not meant to question his integrity or his commitment to the betterment of this community. In the particular matter immediately at hand, the request for Mr. Zeeler's refusal from voting on any matter related to the Mohawk Preserve's plan for the development of the foothills and the subdivision of the 19.1 acre parcel is based on concern over a conflict of interest inherent in the following circumstances. First, the recommendation by the New Paltz Village Government regarding Mohawk Preserve's proposal was made without consideration of crucial evidence bearing on this project. Evidence of probable impacts ignored by the New Paltz Village's endorsement of Mohawk Preserve's proposal includes, one, the town's environmental conservation board report to the New Paltz Planning Board identifying a substantial array of potential impacts, some quite significant arising from this project. Two, the legal and environmental concerns about segmentation in Mohawk Preserve's proposal. And three, the review of complete three-dimensional before-and-after architectural renditions of the proposed project so as to reveal the full and true extent of the terrain to be developed. Second, Mr. Zeeler is representing the New Paltz Village Government in his role on the New Paltz Planning Board and would be in defiance of the New Paltz Village Government's endorsement of Mohawk Preserve's proposal if he were to vote for requiring an EIS for the Preserve. His participation in any vote regarding the New Paltz Town, uh, Planning Board's decision on Mohawk Preserve's project would therefore pose an inherent conflict of interest and would raise significant questions about his objectivity in this matter. Third, and finally, an additional basis for concern of Mr. Zeeler's objectivity should be noted. The New Paltz Village Government is utilizing for other projects the very same architectural firm as the one retained by Mohawk Preserve for preparation of the development proposal for the foothills now before the New Paltz Planning Board. Signed from Struber. Uh, thank you. I also have a, a copy for each member of the planning board of the, so.
I'm Luke Carriola, 6 Jacobs Lane, New Paltz. I thought I was done, wasn't going to make any more presentations. But on, uh, January 16th, Saturday, there was an accident off Jacobs Lane and Gate House Road. Uh, what I've done is I've, uh, got ahold of the police report, and the board has a copy of that, that's reference one. And reference two is the B and L Transportation Evaluation Study. And I have illustrations here, photographs, as should say. Uh, what brought to mind here, not only was this accident that just recently occurred, but it dawned on me the problems we had living on Jacobs Lane. Coming home or going up 299 toward Gate House and Jacobs Lane. Uh, the board, if you look at figure one, you look and there's a sign that's straight, and then there's one to the left, shows turn to the left. But what you see is straight ahead is the Gate House. As you go further up, closer to Jacobs Lane and the Gate House, there's another sign that shows a turn to the left. shows a turn to the left. And in that figure, there is no observation of Jacobs Lane. And in the third figure, as you get closer, you still cannot observe Jacobs Lane. And all it looks like from that first observation is Gatehouse is straight, and then there's a turn to the left. I'm giving our problem where we are. At night, if you come up that same path, you'll see ahead where Gatehouse is, and you'll see the Gatehouse Road sign, it's illuminated, but you still don't see Jacobs Lane. Now, these pictures are all taken, they're just within the last couple of days. So you have no vegetation, so you can imagine, well, we have leaves on the tree, it's even harder to see. You know, I had spoken previously about coming out of Gatehouse and trying to look up 299 and turn 78 degrees like an owl, but this is coming up. And then the last figure is just showing the recent accident where it occurred, and I have a copy of, you all have a copy then, of also the police report. And I'm reading it, I don't totally understand what happened, but it occurred right by Jacobs Lane. I personally believe the problem is, a lot of people, and I see that the one person was from worship, not a local person, so anybody, especially somebody that's not local, they're going to observe those signs ahead and not know there's a road to the left. Now, if we created the rerouting of Gatehouse Road, so it came out as a T, that would eliminate that problem. Anybody coming up will observe that there's a turn there, that there's not a road going straight ahead, and solve that problem. So I asked the board to consider that that has to be done, the rerouting, creating the T at Gatehouse Road. Whether it's by working with the Mohawk or whatever authorities we need to make that happen, that should be one of the things that's required, really, to happen here. And as far as the report on the accidents, they also got from the town police. You have a sheet here, and what they did, there was, I don't know, 20, well, I guess there were 28 accidents here, it doesn't cover the one that just occurred, it was actually 29, but that's over a 10-year period. But they did break it down and noted the, I see it was a one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven incidents, four of those were with injuries, and three were property damage. This is all at the Gatehouse Jacobs Lane 299 area. Please, straighten that program. I mean, I'd like Plan B or Option B, if you can't do that, let's figure out how we get that changed.
Thank you very much. Anybody else didn't sign up? Okay.
My wife's a teenager. My wife's a teenager. My wife's a teenager. My wife's a teenager. Very quickly, I'm glad no one got up to Samus, they loved animals and birds and the Mohawk Preserve, we all love birds, love the preserve, you know, but I'm just glad I didn't have to hear that again. I thought it was ironic to call it a land preservation project, you know, originally got 130 spaces, now you've got to 90, you know, I don't know what, I guess maybe everyone settled on that, but I was hoping you'd reduce the number of spaces somewhat. You know, I call it ironic, you're putting up fences, lights, this is not a case of NIMBY, so to speak. People say, because we live up there, we're, you know, not in my backyard. But on the opposite side, there's the WC NIMBYs, you know, the business people, the people from Garder, the people from out of the area who have made presentations, and, you know, when I say WC NIMBY is, who cares, not in my backyard. So I think some thought has to be given, granted, traffic is an issue. Perhaps I made a suggestion before, using Humpo Marsh more, reducing the number of spaces there, because I remember reading a paper just recently, somebody, Ms. Palmer, somebody, I don't even know who she is, she ran the mayor of village, I don't know what, but she suggested flashing lights there. I mean, is that preservation, is that the pres, she suggested, and it might be an option. Who knows what's going to be put in there when you bring the state and the county and the village and the town, and somebody brings up accident reports. Most of the accidents I saw from this report seemed to be six, 10 accidents at Gatehouse Road, Butterville, but six of them were with animals. So for that, wouldn't have to disrupt everything there. I had a couple of questions, and maybe you can answer them. You mentioned peak, on a peak day, but you didn't define what a peak day means. How many, what numbers are you talking about on a peak day, on a weekend? You mentioned at Mohawk-sponsored events, not you won't have the fairs there, but Mohawk-sponsored events. Well, how many people are we talking about, how many cars are we talking about? You didn't give us that information. How, what can we expect? The guy who did the traffic stuff, spoke about effects, but still, I listened, he said 3%, figured out a 3% increase in traffic. Okay, was that on a weekend, or is that overall for the year annually? Is that for just a finite period? What are we talking about in the summer months, fall foliage time, what are we going to be looking at there, coming in and out? I lived there on 30-plus, 35 years or whatever, and I tell you, I tell my wife all the time, I've never seen so many cars park at Gatehouse as in the last two, two years. There was never anybody there, until the word got out or until it was opened up. Now all of a sudden you go there, and they're very obnoxious, that guy flipped me double, double the other day because there was no place to go, I came very close to. I don't know if a T is the answer at Gatehouse, I really didn't get a visual, but I have to look and see, you know, at Gatehouse and 299. I don't know, you said there's 20, you mentioned 20 accidents, the neighbor up on Jacobs Lane, but four were with cars, was that, does that mean about 15 of them were with animals or self-conflicted, I'm not sure. So anyway, the 3% question, the peak day numbers, what are you talking about, and when you have Mohawk-sponsored event, what are we talking about? You mentioned 90 cars, I'm not sure, you know, in and out, in and out, when your trailhead gets booked up on 299, there's no place for anybody to go, but, you know, if you had space up there for 90 cars or 130 cars, it'd fill up, okay? That's a very popular place. I don't think, I think we may rue the day we open this up for 130. It's just beautiful, and yeah, you guys are great in preserving stuff and all that, it's good, but this doesn't seem like preserving today, okay? So anyway, somebody yelled at me not long ago, not looking at your website, I did a while back, but the night scape is important also to those who live up there, seeing that beauty, beauty at night, and I'm just fearful of flesh and white, things that nature ruin that, so anyway, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Ron.
Hello, Daniel Torres, town of New Falls. I just wanted to address the planning board quickly. I watched your last meeting as well, there's been a lot of discussion about recusals. So while I was sitting back here, I actually just looked up the town law that I figured I referenced to you, it's 15-6, Part A says, "No municipal officer or employee may participate in any decision or take any official action with respect to any matter required the exercise of discretion, including discussing the matter and voting on it, when he or she knows or has reasons to know that the action could confer a direct or indirect financial or material benefit on himself or herself, a relative, or any private organization in which he or she is deemed to have an interest." Just thought that was relevant since it discussed that item, but I don't know if anyone's actually looked at what the town law says. Also, the town has an ethics board as well, so there really was a true question about it, or it could always be made. And I'll also note that recently the town did have this issue, the town board had a member who, there was questions over whether he would be able to deliberate on an item, and it was found that he was able to do that, but during the process of when that complaint was made, he was allowed to continue to stay on the board and deliberate on the item until the ethics board rendered an opinion, and in that case, they did render that he did not in this violation as well. So just wanted to give you that information since the issue has come up now.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just keep this open, should keep it up with your second meeting. Okay. Should motion to close the public hearing for tonight, and we'll reopen it on the next meeting?
So moved.
One second. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed.
Lyle, do you want me to address the issue?
I'm concerned.
Do you want me to?
You certainly may. Okay, I'd be happy to. So I'm Michael Zeiler, and there seems to be a lot of concern about my ability to operate objectively on the town of New Falls Planning Board. First off, I would just say, in the future, it would be terrific if people who have concerns about my ability to operate objectively would actually contact me before they decide to publicly ask for my recusal. It might be possible to provide some additional information that would be helpful, that might or might not change anything, but personally, that would be great. I had no idea that this was going to happen until Erwin spoke. He raises three points that he thinks are grounds for my recusing myself. The first two are predicated on the idea that I am a representative and liaison chosen by the New Falls Village Government to serve on what he calls the New Falls Town Planning Board to formulate a unified town-village master plan. I'm not sure where that came from, but if they indeed did that, they didn't tell me. That's false, as far as I know. I'm not serving as a representative for the village on this town planning board, I'm serving as a private citizen who has chosen to volunteer their time in service, as I've done on a number of boards for the town and the village for the last 18 years. So if Erwin would like to further explain off-camera at some point where he got that information, I'd be happy to discuss that with him. But my belief is that that simply isn't a fact, and therefore, the first two issues that you raise, I really can't agree with you on them. I have nothing to do with what the New Falls Village Board chose to do with respect to the Mohawk Preserve project. The New Falls Village Planning Board, of which I'm currently the chair, and have been on for about four years, we have never discussed the Mohawk Preserve project. And as far as I can remember, I have never publicly spoken about the New Falls Preserve project one way or the other. Your third point is a point that I raised at our last meeting two weeks ago, about the fact that Barton &amp; Le Judas was just recently contracted to do a project for the very first time, so it's project, not projects, as you have in your letter, for the New Falls Village Planning Board. And that's a, they're serving as a, the engineers for the New Falls Village Board, and they will be working on a project that is in a new district that we've just created along North Chestnut, just out here, called the, well, whatever, it's a, it's a high-density mixed-use district. And we brought them on because of their expertise and their ability to look at a variety of things that we're going to be concerned about on that project. And I'm the one who brought up the fact that they are also serving as the Mohawk Preserve's engineers for this. I understand that that could be perceived as a conflict, and I would be happy to talk to the attorney about that, but, but I just want to point out that I'm the one who raised that at our last meeting. Thank you.
We always take a few minutes for a public comment on many issues other than what's brought up with the public hearing application. Anybody else make a public comment? Eric?
I'm Eric Skep, I live at 28 Cedar Ridge Road in town of New Falls, and I want to address some issues regarding the proposal in the steep slope of 103 and 105, Route 208, which is directly uphill of my home. At the last planning board, the applicant's attorney suggested two things, that his client's project would improve the water problem on my property, and I've explained my water problem, it can be a board here, and address any of that, maybe since you're hearing again, but that it would improve the water's problem on my property, and that the data do not support increased runoff from their proposed project. So although I do understand that filling the swell that begins to grow up to 208 and comes down into culvert into my property, that filling that swell with lip route would more than likely slow the flow of water coming down the hillside, but certainly not mitigate the amount of water coming down the hillside, it still has to go somewhere. Those on the planning board who visited the property have seen firsthand the effect of the amount of water that diffuses and flows onto my land, to result in saturated soil and a landscape that's littered with dead mature trees that are falling in the last 10 years and continue to die. That land will continue to fall, to fail, if there's development on the hillside, with further contributions from increased flow associated with any development, disturb soil, trees being cut, septic outflow, tree removal, soil disturbances. Even the engineering concept that they proposed, that infiltration chambers on the hillside will mitigate water damage, is flawed. Because of the steep slope that exists there, as well as the underlying soil structure, their soil on their property, the topsoil there, percolates very well, it allows water to flow into it, but it comes down, about eight feet down, comes to a layer of clay that's relatively impermeable. That layer of clay continues onto the surface of my soil, I don't have eight feet of topsoil or two feet or four feet, I have maybe 12 inches of topsoil before I have a clay subsurface. Any water, wherever it infiltrates through their property, comes down the hillside, gravity takes it down the hillside and onto that clay level where it saturates and comes up on my surface, and causes further damage. Basically, they'll be dumping rainwater and septic effluent downstream onto my property. There's no place else for it to go, but to come onto my property. I'm also puzzled how that will help me. I don't see how this can help me. And I surely don't grasp the idea or the statement that the data don't support decreased runoff. There's nothing changing the amount of runoff, it's just rate of runoff, still the same amount or more because of all the factors that are associated with development. I'm also concerned that in keeping with the discussion at last month, at the last planning board meeting, with discussion highlighted that diligent homeowner will be required to monitor the ongoing performance and safety of the septic system, the infiltration system for stormwater control, and maintain swales. I'm particularly concerned about that if we have to consider that they might be absentee landlords. I brought to your attention before, and absentee landlords don't necessarily make a diligent homeowner, they're not the same. I pointed out before that although the 208 corridor is approved for single-family residences, I believe all of you are aware that the 5, 6 properties in the next probably one-third miles directly south of this project are all most likely absentee landlords. These are houses filled with college students, fraternity members, and individuals, either not family members living there. As I pointed out at another meeting, on mornings when I go out to work, there are six to eight cars of houses that are, are here for three to four bedrooms. Some, one or two are for five. Some, one or two are for five bedrooms, but the number of cars far outranks the number of bedrooms that are. And I suspect that means the number of residents far outranks the number of bedrooms that are. So I would question if those systems that they're being proposing will really be adequate to handle the increased water flow generated by what would be an anticipated density of residents.
Eric, can you start wrapping up?
I'm sorry?
Start wrapping it up.
I'll get it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'd like to remind everybody that we're volunteers, and we'd like to keep it to about three minutes. We don't want to be here all night. Okay, thank you.
Evening. My name's Kevin Gordon. My family lives Calvin, Grovard, in the town. And my comments tonight pertain to the Tran Hudson CBS proposal, so I'd like to make the effort, of course, for their volunteer time. First off, the planning board needs to reopen up the public hearing on this. New documents are arriving and being posted on the website. Given the magnitude of potential impacts that many have shared on this proposal, we need the public hearing process put back in place so we can sufficiently weigh in as a community. For example, the planning board has kept open the public hearing, for Mohawk open, as Mohawk has diligently produced documents for the public's perusal. So let's think about that. Mohawk, a valued member of our community that works to protect open space that we all collectively enjoy, has had their public hearing open while new documents arrive, yet the public hearing on a proposal from a large, out-of-town corporation seeking to build a cookie-cutter box store at one of the busiest intersections in town, bringing with it duplicative services, is currently closed. Like, until when? Until further notice? We need a public hearing reopened, plain and simple. Second, we need to require an EIS on this project. It's abundantly clear to me that CBS as a company doesn't engender trust when it comes to analysis and calling their development proposals. For example, they state, "It is anticipated that the potential impacts for such minor demand of community services may be offset by tax revenues that will be received from these commercial establishments." Like, what tax revenues are they exactly talking about? Has an independent consultant been hired to do an economic study? Without an EIS in place, we're at the mercy of CBS and their own consultants' analysis. I don't deem it a wise strategy to simply be willing as a community to take their word for it. Other communities are on record warning communities like ours about the magician-like move CBS plays to evade local property taxes. Also, the company just had to agree to a settlement for selling expired medication for intake by children. We need to require an EIS so we can obtain needed independent analysis by qualified experts, not simply rely on CBS's own analysis for their work. Third, CBS is not a victim of the planning process. They have expressed some clear frustrations at previous town planning board meetings insinuating that the blame is clearly on the shoulders of the planning board. Let's recall, until mid-point of last year, Tran Hudson had submitted the wrong form for their application that came complete with a photo rendering, which really looked like someone who had just, like, found out how to use power. So now they're claiming that Michael Zeiler should recuse himself of proceedings. So let me get this straight. Tran Hudson CBS wants to remove the person with some of the deepest understanding on how the planning process should operate for this process? They should be approaching Mr. Zeiler for coaching on how to move through the process properly. Speaking of coaching, they could also use some coaching on managers. When I re-watch the recordings this weekend, their tone and attitude as an applicant is atrocious and unorthodox, especially in regards to cutting planning board members off when they're attempting to ask clarifying questions, especially women members of the planning board. Don't believe me? Rewatch the tapes. Could you imagine Mohawk doing that? Of course not, because Mohawk folks are pretty darn nuts. That is actually very.
Can you wrap it up?
So, so to sum up, one, reopen the public hearing, two, require an IRS, three, don't be duped that CBS is somehow some sort of victim of our planning process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. My name is Joel Oppenheimer, 13603 Lane, New Paltz. I just, I know that I sit in front of a lot of legal people looking at laws, administrative laws, and lawyers with, you know, a lot of money behind this. Oh, I'm commenting on the CBS issue. I want to, I just want to, like, urge people to look at a sense of compassion here at this point, because there's been so much talk about laws and administrative hurdles and all the things we go through in this administrative process. As a citizen, it's just incredibly tiring and frustrating, and sitting on the sidelines watching this happen for years now, with so much energy and time wasted. I've worked for many law firms, and I know about the long game, I know about the paper game, I know how it works, and, you know, CBS, you know, in their pinky make more, you know, a zillion more dollars than everybody here in this room. So I'm just really, like, asking the CBS representatives here to please withdraw this proposal, to just end this, because we're going to go around and around and around and around with various things, and people trying to find loopholes and legalese and all sorts of other things to do. But I'm actually just, I'm a social worker. I work with people, not for people, and I'm trying to just urge you to look at, look into your heart about what all this takes. I mean, let's just talk about the environmental impact already from this process that we've been going through. The paper, you know, what is that already? Not to mention the five acres that will be decimated from this project. So I do urge an environmental impact statement. I do urge further public comment on this issue so that more voices can be heard, but I would really just like to speak directly to CBS representatives here and say, withdraw this proposal. Let's just, like, end this madness. Let's just, like, end this thing so we don't have to, like, fight about it, because here's, here's all this energy. Once again.
Thanks, Joel.
Over and over. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, Michael Donald, partner. I want to comment also on the CBS proposal. One point I want to bring up quickly is that on the final EAF, who's supposed to label the final EAF, there are still obvious errors in the document. I'll give you a couple of quick examples. Would the proposed action cause or result in alteration of increase or decrease in size of, or encroachment into any existing wetland, water body, shoreline, feature, adjacent area? The answer is no. But then, a few questions down, the answer to a different question. A portion of the stormwater management facility is discharged to an existing inlet between Ulster County right away on North Black Corners Road, which in turn discharges into the west side of the roadway into a wetlands area. So they're saying no encroachment, but it'll empty into a wetland, obviously incongruous. Will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic above present levels or generate substantial new demand for transportation facilities? They say yes in the EAF, put in the traffic study. They say that the CBS Pharmacy, Five Guys Restaurant generated traffic is not expected to cause any significant impact in overall traffic operations. So which one is it? Yes from the EAF or no from the traffic study? Will the proposed action produce noise that will exceed existing ambient noise levels during construction operation? Well, they say no. I don't know how they're going to build it without making any noise. It doesn't really seem like a accurate answer. Are agricultural lands consisting of highly productive soils present? They say no, but the 2010 draft master plan characterizes that entire area as prime and important farm. And they also, in terms of officially designated areas, they list a couple of buildings and all. But I really want, I want to get into something from new documents from the EAF Part III. A particular one sentence really caught my attention. "It is anticipated that the potential impacts for such minor demand of community services may be offset by the tax revenues that will be received from these commercial establishments." But I, I didn't see any documentation that shows exactly how that's true. I know on its services scene it's true. You build a new building and pay its property taxes, everything's okay, but it doesn't always work quite that way. Besides the demand for local services, you also have the issue that what CBS is offering, what they serve in their retail and services they offer, are all existing. None of this is new demand. So everything that they bring in revenue, or most of what they bring in revenue, is displaced revenue. Now, when somebody walks into CBS and they buy toilet paper, it's not because they just discovered the wonders of toilet paper and they say, "Well, look at this new thing I could buy at CBS. I think I'll try that." It's because they're not buying their toilet paper somewhere else. And that, that can be demonstrated for just by everything they're going to sell. So consider that when they come in and they generate revenue and they operate there, it's just taking money from somewhere else and putting it in their pocket. It's retail activity and commercial activity that exists already in the community. And it's more than just, so, retail items. It's also local services. Like, if you consider something like the legal services or the accounting services that any small business could do, I mean, they're going to source that locally. CBS absolutely is not. So you're displacing more than just that retail revenue that's on site. You're displacing a lot of services as well. I just really think that needs to be backed up. We cannot assume the statement that this is going to be a tax-positive development. It very easily can be tax-negative. And just consider the possibility that we scar that landscape forever and bring their retail location in, and it turns out to be taxing negative. We'll really be asking ourselves, what was that for? Thank you.
Thank you. Kitty?
I live in the Rocky Hill Road area of Arkansas. On the CBS project, in order to be consistent with your prior requests for more information from other applicants, for example, asking Mohawk Preserve to describe how wildlife will be affected, I hope you will require the same analysis of CBS. There aren't many undisturbed habitats left in our town, and I think it's important that we understand what migratory patterns and habitats may be affected by the increased traffic on North Black Corners Road. Also, since new information has been provided to you by CBS since your last public hearing, I hope that you will require an environmental impact statement, reopen the public hearing so we may comment in public record on this new data. One of the things I will comment at the public hearing about is that the applicants claim that their box store will provide the same therapeutic sound and environmental buffer as the trees they plan to clear cut, something that we need to think about as you go forward in your deliberations. On Wildberry Lodge, which is not before you at the moment, I note that one of the reasons you identified this project as a Type 1 action is concern over potential impacts to the watershed in Appleford. As a resident of Rocky Hill Road, my house and well, along with the 50 other houses in our subdivision, is approximately the same height as Wildberry. So my question is, whether we have ever mapped this Appleford? If yes, will the data that you receive project how this project will impact the wells of the people who depend on this Appleford? And if not, is it appropriate to ask the applicant to conduct such a study? I honestly don't know if we've mapped the Applefords in our town, but if we haven't, I think a project of this size requires a study of that kind. Also, one of the requirements of a Type 1 action, as I understand it, is that the applicant should provide an alternative plan. I don't want to spring this on Wildberry when they do come back before you, but I hope that you will let them know that you would like to see a true alternative plan that is actually consistent with our zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on to application reviews. First up is Tran Hudson Management CBS.
So, maybe, can we refresh about why, when we closed the public hearing, well, I guess, what's the argument against reopening it again? I've been out of the game for a while.
Always a question?
Well, a couple people mentioned reopening the public hearing. Why don't we do that? Sure, we have gotten more information. Why don't we reopen the public hearing? Anyone have any thoughts?
Since you have sufficient new information to warrant that. If there's new information about something that the board has secured, or the impact on the board, or if there's something that's not there, but if it's more information that we find your knowledge of that, it's not necessarily something that works to reopen the hearing. Hearing is generally reopened when there's something that was not previously available to the board or to the applicant, when there's a significant change in the nature of the project, or in the circumstances that take place. Similar to the circumstances in which your primary examiner did that declaration. Some changes proposed, or new information, or changes in context. Generally, the issue that you face is, you know, every time there's some information available to you about something you've been talking about, you reopen the public hearing, there's discussion, there's some new information, and close the hearing, and the new information is not available across the circle. So generally, if there's information that you, that you're progressing in a linear fashion, you ask for information to address public comments, or make a figure, and you evaluate what does that have to do with the rest of your strategy.
Well, I think we have received significant new information. I wonder if we could reopen the public hearing with a caveat that will actually stick to our three-minute limit for speakers. What about that? I'll just go ahead and make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Is there a second?
You want to reopen it tonight?
No, not tonight, for the next meeting. Because I guess I feel like.
Oh, okay. That's all I, I just wanted you to clarify your motion.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, just from my, my reasoning is that I feel like we get really good information from the public, and I think it is tedious to sit there. I mean, maybe we could just beg the public to not come up and say the exact same things again and again, because that's not useful for anyone, but it is really useful. Like, we've had so many great members of the public who are planners, who are in this field, help us out with this, and I am all for more of it. So I will make the motion.
I'll second it.
Question is, the motion on only new information pertaining to the site, to the site plan?
Hmm, like, can we stop people from talking if they're going to talk about something?
Well, I, you know, the question is, is if it's something new, yes, the public should have a chance to comment on to it. If it's the same item, you know, you're.
Well, yeah, in as much as we can monitor that.
Some discussion. If there is specific information that you are seeking information on, or specific topics that you're seeking information on, it might be useful to consider that in deciding what we need in the public hearing. It's certainly getting comments at the board.
Yeah.
And the, the public record that's recorded, it's based, one base, so what you act, you act on the basis of the application.
Exactly, yeah.
Information about an applicant, or information that you're going to report to the public hearing.
Well, I guess I could.
As you pointed out, there is, there are a lot of recent public comments, and the object of it is the unusual information if you reopen the hearing. So I think it would be helpful to.
Yeah. Well, for example, tonight, I mean, I think we got useful information in the public comments, but they weren't specifically in a public hearing for CBS, so there's limited, you know, it's not on the actual record for CBS. So I feel like as long as we're, if, I mean, if everyone thinks that was, you know, tonight there wasn't even a public hearing, but I feel like I wrote down notes that I was like, this is, this is good, I gotta, I gotta note this. So I feel like more information is useful.
Part of the reason that I second it is that I understand that the public comment period that the planning board allot, which is a simply, you know, it's a discretionary thing that this board has chosen to do, that that doesn't become part of the public record. And that's how it was explained to me, anyway. So the advantage of doing this during a public hearing is that we do actually then have a public record of this information. I think Tom raises a good point. I think Tom raises a good point. I gather all we can do is ask people to speak to the new material as it appears for the Mohawk project. By and large, tonight, that's what people did. So...
Dr. Bigfoot, I'm confident word considered. I don't understand what the new information is that you're talking about. The only new documents that are in the record, I think, on long review, is the PERT 3 evaluation. That's a board-generated document. I don't believe we... The applicant hasn't submitted any new information. We did respond to the comment back in September, and then the board closed the public hearing, I believe, at the end of September. And then from there, the board's been working on their secret evaluation. So I don't think there's been any new information submitted by us. It's been information generated by the board, maybe by the board's consultants along the way or to assist the board in arriving at CBS. So, you know, I don't want to have an impression, have the public have an impression that, you know, we've submitted new sets of plans or...
Right.
You know, have a wholesale change or a new analysis. That's not the case.
No, right. No, that's true.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Here's the motion is failed.
You can't win them all.
I understand that there's been some discussion, not the building?
There has been. There has been. Let me just go over that with the whole board. At the last meeting, there was a suggestion that we meet with the chairman and Michael to bring Michael up to speed on the plans, if you will, with the project, along with the town's engineer. We did have that, we did have that meeting and went over the plans and went over some suggestions. Three areas that we discussed were the idea of whether the elevation of the site can be lowered from the proposed grading plan. I think Dave Pozner had suggested that perhaps it could be four feet, and we looked at that, had the engineer take a look at that, and came to the conclusion that, yes, the site can be lowered, probably not to four feet, probably more in the area of the one foot elevation change. And Dave, I know that Mazur sent over a memo to you explaining what they think were the technical indications and not being oversighted or more to that. I don't know whether Dave has had a chance to look through that and come to a conclusion about that. So there does appear to be some ability to move on that issue. It looks like one foot's going to be the level. Unless, you know, you and Mazur somehow can come to an engineering, you know, agreement that it could be lower.
Dave, you can explain that, please, before we...
I spoke to Justin when he called at the end of last week and told him, he told me that he thought it can come down a foot. I told him I didn't understand why it was limited to a foot, and I told him if he was going to provide something, he really needed to provide detail that I could check to either agree or disagree. I got a memo from Mazur at the end of Friday. It's general. I really don't have anything to check. I was able to take a look at the plans this afternoon, and based on the grading that I see, I still don't understand why it can't come down further than one foot. So we're not there yet. It hasn't been explained yet. The other thing we talked about was banking parking. We identified a dozen or more spaces for that.
I was going to be seconding those, you know, we got that. We did identify, actually, I think, twelve spaces that could be land banks. And again, you know, the idea of the land bank concept is that you would not build those now. They would probably, they would exist as landscape area, and then at some point, there would be a trigger mechanism that if needed, those spaces would then be constructed at some point in the future. So the applicant doesn't necessarily give up rights to those spaces, but it doesn't have to be built up front, and you can see whether the site works with less parking spaces or not.
I have a question for you. I'm uncertain what lowering the building one foot, what impact that would have. I mean, even if it was unit, the one foot represented 25% of the fill, probably a lot less than that. It's not reducing the truck trips or the noise of traffic or the fill section. One foot isn't a whole lot.
I think, again, I'm not clear on the details, but, you know, that's something that Dave and Mazur could discuss, but even with the one foot, you end up with an awful lesser amount of fill coming into the site. So whatever rent actor may be from the importation of the fill would last for a short period top. And then I think even at the one foot, you do get a reduction of the extent of the fill area. It sort of comes in, if you pay for that, the trap is already, it gets a little smaller at the base, but you don't have to go up another foot. So you do gain some, the ability to reserve some room of perimeter, even by lowering down a foot.
So maybe by our next meeting, the two of you could talk, and we could hash that out a little bit, the four feet versus one foot?
Yeah, I need detail. Yes, they're saying that they can't lower the subsurface systems, but I don't see a reason to lower that. Subsurface systems are down eight feet already. So, you know, their explanation didn't have enough detail.
And I'll have the engineer contact Dave and go over that some more.
The premise during the meeting was that Dave identified, actually, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, four to six feet, you thought, was feasible without disrupting, without creating a slope, a driveway in off of 299 that would be too steep. And based on your calculations at the time, which were rough but quick, was that going down a sufficient amount, like four to six feet, might actually balance the site, and the need for bringing in soil could be greatly reduced, if not virtually eliminated, which would be not only, but make a significant change to the site, but also would greatly reduce the cost to the applicant. So there was advantages for a number of reasons in that regard.
Dave, just for clarification, when you say, like, the structures you're down eight feet, you mean the inverts, the catch bases, and things like that?
Yeah, there's subsurface drainage storage structures, and they're down on a gravel pad that's eight feet below grade at this point. The implications of this reasoning was that they would have to lower those farther, and they were concerned that they wouldn't get the same infiltration that they got for the systems where they are. The DEC requires infiltration tests to be taken three feet below that gravel pad, so there's a record already of what that infiltration is, but I just, I don't have enough information to show me that these have to be lowered to get them. It needs more detail. I need some grades.
So until we get that detail, okay, is that something that you can guess?
Yes, I'm going to have, I'll have the engineer talk to Dave and sound...
I need more than talk, though. Really needs some...
Talk, he doesn't have a map and go through it.
And so if you bank parking spaces, which ones would they be?
We actually identified some of them.
So you are going to land bank the 12 spaces?
I'm saying that it's feasible. It's feasible that that could be done.
What you had talked about doing with Park Point Project was something which would allow, you know, if you come in and say, "We need more space if you're the evidence," and determine whether or not the space could be allowed.
Great.
I mean, if you...
Yeah, if you'd be interested in ideas.
Dave probably has a bigger map than this, but basically, we're talking about these six spaces towards 299. You have that for the CBS issue, and then there is, I think, six spaces over here on the five. Oh, excuse me, no, no, this is spaces over here, I'm sorry, these ones here for CBS.
So it's not the ones by 299?
No, no, not the ones by 299. Pretty much everybody insurance, right?
And then we have to talk about shared parking with the other side sites. That's what we're having.
The issue about the shared parking, did you go over that issue too? Shared parking usually comes up when you have two uses on the site that have different demand periods, different peak demand periods. Typically, you would see shared parking, because you can't put up a hotel and a restaurant, they may have different peak periods for parking. Here, we talk about a retail facility and a restaurant, your parking demands pretty much end up around the same time. So shared parking, I don't think would work at this site.
So you were saying the purpose of the meeting, elevation and land banking? Is there something else? I'm just trying to make this up.
So we also, we also talked about the idea about the building architecture.
Oh, great, okay.
And we have, you know, we have a long issue about that. And again, we're, at one point, I thought it was going to be that one of the board members or someone was going to perhaps show examples or give a point, examples of what they think is a...
We've seen a bunch of photos. Yeah, over the years.
You know...
We can resend them.
If you resend them, that'd be great, because they seem to be, they seem to be lost in transmission somewhere.
All right, we can send them.
It was the ones that you specifically said. Short of that, the idea of describing what the basis of that architectural design would be, so that it would be a more, it would allow the board to reach a conclusion that such a design would be consistent with the community character. And actually, I don't think that's all that complicated about a description. I think it probably is a description that follows about some culture stone in building siding as opposed to brick, and either a full roof structure or at least something that mimics a full roof structure. And by that, I mean, and I don't know whether it can be done or not, but perhaps there's a way to make it look like from the street that it looks like it's a full roof structure from a seven-point view, but in reality, it's not. So I think those are the three bases about that.
Well, I don't know if you've probably received, we got a letter from Susan Blickstein, and she talked about that a bunch. She's a planner. And she said a smaller, oh, she's talking about a smaller building, but she said a smaller building could much more successfully be designed with vernacular barn-style and/or Dutch reminiscent architectural treatment, for example. We need to look beyond the skin of the building. Same is true for the Five Guys. I think she might have more. That's all I copied, but I can send you that letter. And then she also mentioned, which maybe we've talked about, the signs, that right now they're freestanding, and if we could do monument-style signs, more in keeping, that are not internally illuminated. We stand on that.
So, I mean, to me, it sounds like you have some of the ideas for what we're looking for. Something to break up the facade, to culture stone, something other than ethos siding, slope group, with appearance of slope group, or pseudo dormers, or that's what we've seen on the mobile station, on the Old County Bank, on the... Stop, I stopped. Not exactly a good example.
Hampton Inn.
Hampton Inn, yes. And another one, yeah.
Because this issue has come up periodically, I look back at Hampton Inn and see how to go and handle the secret resolutions of that project. And you did have the applicant present a architectural setting, visual impact assessment, and based on that, you mentioned the volume, the floors, the materials, you did conclude that that was consistent generally with the contemporary character of the area, consistent with these other developments that take place, and that you basically made that finding as your secret determination. And then the applicant presented that it's part of the site plan, materials, more paintball renderings, and that was what you approved, and hopefully, that's what's going to actually go, because you have control over it with the renderings and materials, and that's consistent with that, to know that inspectors, your checkups, so to speak. So what I did, not necessarily because I'm recommending it, but because I feel like it's useful for the board to consider, so I took the visual impact section on the Hampton Inn revolution, secret resolution, and tried to adapt it to the circumstances you have with CBS. From understanding it, CBS, it's chicken and egg, and CBS would like to know if you're what you're looking for, so the repairs you've dealt with, the history required, and if you're having some difficulty finding CBS, sort of, would be appropriate.
I don't think we are. We sent a million photos. Ryan Back is a great example. Lots of info.
There is a reason of that for CBS and Mohawk, that was offered as a model.
There was CBS and Mohawk that was offered as a model, and as we explained to the board previously, that's not an original build of CBS, but that would have as a purchase of our... So, again, as we explained to the board before, what I believe the board is looking for here is a design that's going to be, should have to be a totally new design for CBS. And again, understanding that the players, if you will, here, that the applicant is trans Hudson management, CBS is tenant, and we only have certain control over what the tenant would be or not be willing to build. So rather than, we're trying to break this in case, if you will, the idea that if the board can come to a conclusion that says, from a secret point of view, if you design your building this way, that building would be acceptable from, I'll say, a community character for the community. Obviously, the detailed design, then CBS can decide whether they want to go for the effort of designing that building and whether it fits into their core structure for the site, and we move on from there. The board would still have the final say, and we'd have to come back with a, you know, a design with renderings and that, and you can say, like, "Yeah, that meets what we're talking about," or it doesn't, we can go through that.
What about Five Guys?
Well, Five Guys, Five Guys flows along with this.
So it'd be a similar design?
It would be a similar design, yeah. It'd be a similar design. But Five Guys is probably a little bit more, a little bit more flexible. It's a smaller building. They don't have as much set corporate design specification that CBS may have. And certainly, whatever we talk about on CBS, Five Guys would have to go along with that. But again, the same thing, there's also a tenant. If there's a tenant, they say, "No, I can't do that. It's too cross prohibitive. I'm not going to follow the deal." That's fine. Well, you know, it's not fine, but, you know, it's like climate, I don't know what to say, but, you know, it would be a decision they would have to make.
I think that's a good way for us to think about it, is to craft like a memo or something that is guidelines that are in keeping with our community character that we can then present, that we would say, "This is something that we would, you know, approve with seeker," and then go from there. And I think a lot of what we need to talk about as a board is that that would involve, you know, smaller footprint, which is the elephant in the room kind of here. So, there we are.
And I hear what you're saying about that. That's for the board to decide, do you think that's a mitigation or not? That's fine. But again, what the point I'm trying to get to is that we need a decision from the board, a secret decision from the board, as to what, you know, what would the board approve, so then we can go back to our tenants and say, "This is..." approve, so then we can go back to our tenants and say, this is, these are the stipulations that you're willing. Can you design the building this way? Do you want to design the building this way? Is it, would it fit into your financial performance for this site? And tell us that, because that's the, when I go back to the tenant and I say, well, why can't you just design the building now? They're like, we don't know what other, what other conditions there's going to be.
I would assume that they must have 1,500 stores across the country. I don't know, I don't know any, no. Like, they must have a lot of different types of stores. Why don't you just go through your file, pick out like, things that have been met, just the basic things that you mentioned, for the foliage, those sort of, the utmost in our mind, and send some photos off, and give us a sense of what has been done or could be done. And we're not binding into that, but it's hard for us to design a drugstore, you guys have already designed it, not you personally, but CBS has already designed it many, many times, and I'm sure they've run up against this before. Show us what can be done, and let us, I don't expect you to spend a lot of money and drop clients and everything, but they must have some design features that they've incorporated to mitigate these concerns.
I think also, we could send like a paragraph with some, you know, terms and things to look for.
Yeah, we could send some photos of some of the buildings around town.
Well, we have done that. I went out and took photos of a bunch of places.
That has been done. The photos of the Hampton Inn, of the.
All Star Savings.
That has been done. What I'm getting at is more than just setting in on the architecture, like to get the overall decision on Seeker. And by that, it would identify that, you know, fine, this is what you have to do for stormwater, this is what you're doing for grading, this is what you're doing for parking, the land banking issue, so that it can be looked at by the tenants as a package, that these are the conditions under which you're going to be able to move forward with this project. And so that they can make a decision in totality that whether this is something that can be done or not.
Well, I guess what I think, correct me if I'm wrong, is that architecture is just one of the big issues, there's still a lot of little issues out there.
It does seem like we're getting stuck in this chicken and egg thing, where we're waiting for you guys to have a plan that's more acceptable, and then you're waiting for us to do Seeker, and it just feels like we're caught in an endless loop we can never get out of. I feel your pain.
That's the issue right there, that, you see, I'm sitting here with the impression that I think the other major areas are resolved. But if the board thinks that they're not, then we need, we need to go to that.
Yeah.
We need to get to that, and there's, and you can get, you can get to that through the Seeker, through the Seeker determination. You know, there is a full, you know, site plan design that's been submitted. You know, again, you know, this issue of the grading has come up, and that's something that has to be resolved. But, again, you know, issues like traffic, the general way how stormwater is going to be handled at the site, the technological impact or potential impact from the project has been looked at by county consultants and applicant consultants, so. Again, the issue I'm trying to get to is that if we could get to a secret determination for the project, it would identify what the, I don't want to use the word outline, because it's too general, we must be specific to that, that, you know, these are the issues that have been resolved, and resolved in a certain way, and then we can go to our tenant and ask them, is this something you, is this something you'd like?
Well, okay, yeah, I have a million little things, but maybe we should get to the, our main discussion.
Lyle, what is our objective tonight with this application?
Well, I think there was sort of hanging balance about the grades.
Well, I submitted detailed comments about the draft EAF, as was requested by Mike. They were submitted to Kelly and distributed to the planning board consultants. I don't necessarily mean that we need to go through those in particular, but I'll just say generally, I've raised issues on a number of things that other, that our applicant's attorney here is indicating that, or implying that perhaps they are settled, and I wouldn't necessarily call the traffic issue settled, I certainly wouldn't call the land impact settled, I wouldn't call the community character issues settled. And, so I don't know what our objective is this evening with the applicant. I guess I'm concerned about getting, I'm not sure at what level, if we're just doing the detailed level, or if we're going to look at, if we're really going to start going through the EAF and try to come to a consensus on the board.
We have, I'm sorry, we have Ken here tonight. I would just think that anything with traffic, maybe we can go through that and hopefully address those, so that they just know what needs further attention.
I just have an overall question for the applicant, is what are you guys willing to do to mitigate the impacts of traffic? And especially, someone mentioned, cut through traffic on local streets. Broad question, throwing it out there.
You're probably not going to have the answer, but I'll say that, because we have prepared a detailed traffic impact analysis that examines the potential for traffic impact on this project, and allows the mitigation that's been proposed to mitigate those potential impacts. The planning board's traffic consultant has reviewed that comment on it, we've worked with them and revised it slightly, I guess, along the way, and so that's why I thought, I was under the impression prior to sitting here tonight, that the traffic issue was resolved.
I'm not under the same issue, the same impression, so, here we go.
And that's, that's an example, just so, to try to, you know, see from our point of view, that when we talk about building designs and cost for different building designs, that's one issue versus, well, if traffic mitigation is going to cost X amount of money, but in reality, the traffic mitigation they cost Y, that's a factor that goes into the overall financial picture of the project. So, that's why I'm trying to get to a point where we can get all the issues resolved, if we know what the conditions are.
Yeah, definitely.
So, make a decision.
Should we listen to Ken go ahead and give a presentation?
Oh, I apologize, I was in a hurry and I grabbed everything from all of them, I didn't grab the CBS file that I had. So I'm going a little bit off of memory, but I know some of the things that they're proposing, particularly around the intersection of 299 and North and South Putt Corners Road, is the pedestrian signal controls that are there, or current and not there, they'll be adding those, they're adding a crossing across 299 to the site side, they're removing that channelized island that's there, currently, you come up to a yield sign, that'll fall under traffic signal control with pedestrian crossing, they're adding the bike lane on 299 across the bridge, along the North Putt Corners Road frontage, they are grading the site next to the roadway to accommodate a future trail connection, if there's a multi-use trail or sidewalk that goes in in the future, they're providing that.
Wait, can I ask a question about the bike lane? But there's no bike lane on North Putt to Henry Dubois. Dubois, I've lived in town forever, I still say both ways.
Correct, yep. I don't know what the future, in terms of an overall bicycle connection through there will be, but they're providing a graded, a graded area, where there's guide rail right now, the area right behind it, if you step off today, you'll go down a slope, you know, it'll be leveled out there to accommodate that.
I mean, I think the county has recommended that, is that, have people gone through this before, but is that something that you guys would be amenable to?
You're asking me?
Yeah.
Again, I think this was a closed issue, that we have reviewed the plans of the county and showed that we would have an area that would not only not inhibit a bike that went in there, but actually were promoting, you'd have a paved grade area already there, and even where we weren't doing anything along the frontage of 299, excuse me, of North Putts, we were also showing them the plans that provided easement at such times as needed to be extended.
But why not just the bike lane?
And I think the issue about that is that you don't know what the design that the county would want to go forward with, would be the detailed design of it, so you may end up building something that.
That's not in keeping.
Right.
They also, and I think it's kind of a big one, is move their site driveway. It used to be closer down to 299, and we had a lot of discussion about the site distance and queuing in that area. The applicant felt that the site distance was adequate, we commented that we felt it was, wasn't adequate, and they moved your driveway further north to get a better view of the site and the direction there.
I have a question, it's going to sound a little naive maybe, but to what extent have you done this traffic analysis? In other words, when you get hired to do a traffic analysis, there probably are some that are narrower, and some that are broader, and some that, you know, they're just more in-depth to.
Like the scale of the study?
Yeah, the scale of the study, thank you.
Yeah. It partly depends on the size of the development and what's being proposed. When you look at a project that, you know, I'll use the casino down in Monticello area, very large, very large traffic generator, for a project like that, you might look at 20 intersections, you know, all around town. As you get smaller and smaller in the proposed size of the development, your impacts become smaller and smaller, so your scope also decreases, it becomes more comparable to what you're proposing. So, they started out, I think, at just the intersection of 299 and North Putt Corners Road, they included, they had North Putt and Dubois, and then as part of the DOT comments, they expanded that and looked at the interest to, it's the shop right, the silent shop, and the thruway on the other side of the bridge. So they expanded that out to address the comments that DOT had provided. So, they started, which is probably pretty comparable to the size they were looking at, and then expanded it, you know, to the comments that were received.
Okay, so I'm not only talking about the area that you covered and the different intersections, but maybe how many times you actually did a peak traffic? I mean, did you do that once, twice, three times? And for another study, you might be doing it for all week, all day? I know we have these studies.
I just want Ken to clarify, each reviewing studies done by the applicant is not true to.
So, so my.
I have done these kind of studies.
Right, so I want to know if this kind of study is appropriate, and how much deeper you could go, not so much in the areas, but in the actual peak traffic conditions? Because I just remember, and I have to look back, seeing that some of them were, went from like a D to an airport, you know, that it really was really terrible, but there wasn't enough for me to say, oh, so they did a couple of Saturday afternoons, and what was the peak time? And it was hard for me to understand, like, it just didn't seem like enough.
Yeah, it's, typically, when we look at traffic on a weekend, you'll look at, you know, Monday afternoon through like a Friday morning, you know, you get into Friday afternoons, and it becomes a little, people leave early for the weekend, and it's a little more unusual. So when you're looking at a commuter area, or a project that's going to generate most of the traffic during the weekdays, you'll pick out those time periods, and as traffic fluctuates throughout the day, you'll narrow in where those peaks are, that being usually the morning commuter period, and then the afternoon commuter period, and if your development generates traffic on the weekend, you'll look at the Saturday, because a lot of the people.
How many Saturdays?
If you, if you, if you get an average day, meaning it's not a Columbus Day weekend, or it's not, you know, a holiday kind of weekend, it'll typically be one Saturday afternoon, one weekday afternoon or morning. If there's an accident or something, that could throw things off, so you might have to go back out there and do it again. But typically, you don't have to go out and count the same intersection five times kind of in a row.
Okay, I mean, that helps me, but thank you.
Now, the impact on previous studies, I'm sure a traffic study was done for Hampton Inn with their projections. Now, looking at this project, are you including those projections for Hampton Inn into the finals? Because the project hasn't, you don't know what the effect of Hampton Inn is going to be, and how it's going to affect their project.
Yep. So, in those situations, you get the traffic study for Hampton Inn, and you include that as the background development in the study that you're actually doing. And what they did is they did that, they grabbed Hampton Inn, they also grabbed the Wildberry Lodge and included that traffic. If the Hampton Inn, obviously, the traffic study for the Hampton Inn was based on, you know, standard rates, and if for some reason Hampton Inn is developed and it's generating more traffic than anybody expected, it would throw, you know, the study off beyond that. But short of it being unusual and doesn't match up to what it was originally considered, then generally, that's how you account for those projects that aren't built yet and aren't generating traffic. In some cases, you're, you know, looking at a study that already has that development built and is generating traffic, and then you, you know, exclude it and just accounts.
So you would just say, for example, to include Hampton Inn, would you include so many cars going north on Putt to Hampton Inn and intersection, whatever they put in, they're going to come out of there and develop them, and, you know, but see, at the time they do that, they don't know that people are going through Hampton Inn, or the CBS to get their blood, so to get their pipeline further, so, sort of, you know, there's got to be some kind of a push factor there or something, right?
Yeah, it's, I wouldn't expect there to be a lot, I mean, certainly, they could go to Five Guys, but I doubt they're going over to CBS to, you know, get prescriptions and stuff. But, yeah, you don't have that type of interaction. If you had a, let's say, for Wildberry Lodge, if you had a hotel across the street from Wildberry, you could assume that there's some interaction between that new hotel and Wildberry Lodge, because they're complementary uses. In the case of CBS, they did include a little bit of interaction between the CBS and the Five Guys, but I don't, you know, I can't recall a pan, how much traffic from Hampton Inn was coming north, you know, most of the time.
No, I'm just using.
Yeah.
So, the traffic analysis, the traffic study that they did, and then what you analyzed, that was done fairly early on, I mean, some months ago, if I recall, did it include in that analysis, did it project out and include the third, the potential for a third building there of, you know, what we've been talking about, 7,000 square feet and so forth?
Yeah, they did. The original study just looked at the CBS and the Five Guys.
Right.
And then later, as the discussions came out about the third pad site, that, obviously, they had no intention to build it, but there was concern that what if it was? And it had to do with the use of that land, but also locating the site driveway, you know, and having it be useful for both sides of that. So they did another analysis where they did assume that, I think it was partly bank and part office and store footage, and then took those, took that traffic generated by that and ran it through the intersections as well, so.
And we have that data, and you analyzed that data, and we have your report, okay? I apologize if I'm not completely caught up on that. The other thing is that, as far as I understand, so, the reason that I bring that up is that in your, somewhere in here, and I can't put my finger on it at the moment, I believe there's a comment about if the third site is built, that the levels of service will deteriorate, and again, I don't remember, but it seemed to be a particular, notice that there was a significant level of, level of service deterioration as a result of the third pad site. Is that correct?
I don't recall if it was, I don't believe it was significant, I can't remember the specific language in there, but.
Yeah.
If they, if they built the pad site and they didn't do any improvements, then certainly it would be significant. If they built the pad site and they had all the improvements in place, it addresses those.
The improvements being the timing, so the signal timing, etc.
Timing, yep. That is the most critical one, relative to the capacity, but the other improvements would be. would be the critical as well.
There are two other issues that, before we get to any of the construction-related stuff. One is that the, neither the analysis nor, I mean, neither the study and therefore not your analysis either, looks at what a number of people have talked about, which is impacts on nearby residential neighborhoods and town streets. The concern is that because of the intensity of traffic that already exists at that intersection, that there would be an increase in traffic either from local residents trying to avoid that intersection or people trying to leave this proposed development and turning right instead of left and then subsequently going down nearby neighborhood streets in order to make their way back to Main Street further to the west. And the potential impacts of those are not just traffic related, but also issues around safety since they are residential neighborhoods. And they are streets that do not have sidewalks on them. And so is there a way for us to, I felt that that was a deficiency and point that out in this Part III is something that meets, I feel, deserves discussion from the board that might need to be further addressed.
Yeah, the limit of their study went to North Buck Corners Road and Henninge.
Right.
And they assumed some percentage is going to turn left and go down, you know, but they didn't look at any of the intersections further down into that area.
Do the left turns, turn left turn at that intersection?
Northbound left.
Northbound left turns off North Buck Corner to the Boyd.
Yes.
So you do have some information about the frequency of that?
Correct, yes. They have the existing traffic at that intersection. They projected some of their traffic would just continue north on North Buck and some would turn left and go down.
Another point is that over the summer, there was a conversations about emergency services and I remember that it was agreed at the table that there should be a meeting between various representatives from fire, police and ambulance to meet with some folks from the applicant. And I believe that the meeting that took place was with representatives from Mazer Consulting and then individuals from fire, police and rescue. I don't know that anybody from the planning board was actually there and I don't believe anything was formally ever written up about the actual meeting itself. We did receive brief letters from each of the three agencies indicating their responses. One from the rescue squad was that they indicated that they didn't feel this was applicable to them. I would respectfully disagree, given the location of their, of the rescue squad's office and the frequency with which they traveled through there. But they chose not to answer. I believe they were at the meeting, but I don't know that for certain. I think it would be really helpful to get a more detailed report about what actually took place at that meeting. I've spoken just informally to somebody in the fire department and it sounded like there was a fair bit of substantive information that was, went back and forth. And I just think that the, that we haven't really evaluated carefully the potential impacts on police, fire and rescue going through this intersection, given the proximity of the rescue squad's headquarters of Station Two and the current location of the police department. And so that's something else that I think deserves greater attention than we've had so far.
Yeah, I think it was kind of glossed over a little bit.
Mike, so would you suggest from having another meeting or interviewing each person next to the meeting and getting their-
Well, I'm assuming that Mazer probably took some notes at that, maybe other folks did, and we could probably get a more detailed report and see if that's substantial enough. Or maybe somebody from the planning board could go back and ask some additional questions of the rescue squad chief, the fire chief and the police chief to sort of elaborate on the comments they made, which were, you know, useful, but I don't think detailed enough for us to really decide one way or the other. You sort of have to read between the lines of the police chief's letter to decide whether or not you think this project could or might not have an impact.
Could I suggest that perhaps Mazer could distribute a memo somewhere else in whatever interaction is placed and copy the two of those numbers?
Sure.
They have a fair, that's an opportunity for them to-
Yeah, and they could respond to that.
Application.
Yeah, that would be a good way to start.
I think there was, I don't know if it was memorialized in a memo, but it was in an email. And I'm recalling that it was in some of the comment responses. I'll be able to find that.
Okay. If you have something, that would be-
You know, distribute it again, refresh it, and here it is again. But if that's not adequate enough, then I think that next step would be necessary.
The other, another point of concern is that a lot of the, we heard a lot from people during the public hearing about the removal of this slip lane and the replacement with a signalized right turn. And I wonder if it would be possible for us to have somebody from DOT come to a planning board meeting and sit down and explain to us, because my understanding repeatedly the applicant has said this is not something that they asked for, but DOT is integrating this into the application because they see it as an opportunity or an appropriate time to do this. But I feel like DOT has driven by their decisions a number of things that have gone into this application that have potential impacts that we're evaluating. And I think it would be really useful to have somebody from the DOT who could come and answer some questions related to why this is absolutely essential, why various alternatives couldn't be considered, and both with respect to the slip lane, to the bike lane and to the pedestrian crossings.
I think that's a great idea. We could, it would be great actually to have a meeting with DOT and talk about a number of projects. We could talk about Mohang and the speed limit on 299 too, which would have a list of things.
If that helps to bring them to the table.
I'm sure it was.
Just to sort of give you some information, what's the conversation with Kansas Oil about getting DOT to improve the intersection study with them and with the county? And did they request that DOT need to, like, technical review survey and my knowledge, DOT is not being a wrench in that?
That, that would be with experts, you mean, as opposed to-
Well, basically, the idea was to get all of the, because at one point, there was a discussion about DOT proposals to improve improvements along the drop 299 park. The notion was, we have a number of applications on route 299, the traffic on two, if you could get all of the regulatory agencies, you know, DOD, the highway department in the same space, presumably including the state's DOD. To look at what was proposed by DOT and what impact these projects might have, it would be a good meeting to have. The dentist didn't read, he didn't make that request of DOT and that will be sometimes in the summer still.
Okay. That's, that would be terrific. I don't think that substitutes for what I'm suggesting, because I would think, since we have applications in front of us along 299, I think it would be really useful to be able to, I, my, my experience before I came on the board was that when I raise specific comments about things related to 299, such as not removing the slip lane, alternatives for the, where the bicycle lane or path could go, why, concerns about putting a pedestrian crosswalk across a five-lane road that's one of the busiest, perhaps the busiest intersection in the community. I was told that it had to go through the planning board and then to the DOT. When I tried to make calls to the DOT myself, as a citizen, I was able to speak to the bike ped person, but nobody else. And as a member of this board now, I think it would be incredibly useful to have a representative from DOT here so that we could have conversations face-to-face instead of doing everything through memos that go from our engineer to theirs.
I'm not disagreeing at all with you.
Yeah, so I just want to emphasize that's, I don't think one, yours would be fantastic too, certainly for long-range planning, it would be great, but-
I just think it might have better- The only point is DOT is not that so.
Well, would you want to call them up now as a member of the board?
Thinking that maybe a better idea might be to make up like 10 or 20 questions-
Sure.
And send them to these people, like on, maybe on each project, I don't, you know, could be on each project. We probably have that many questions, like, what are your plans? What are you doing to us? What's going to happen in the future? What is your budget, say you're going to do this?
You're skeptical. Sure.
Well, do you think if you called them back now as a member of the board?
They'd probably tell me they would speak to the chair, would be my guess.
They're much more of a reactionary group than proactive on the side.
That's okay.
Well, maybe we can ask Mike to call them.
But if you just invite them and you want them to answer your questions, they might be more comfortable if they had a subject map.
Oh, that, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like, these are the kinds of things that we want to know.
Sure.
Maybe it would make them more forthcoming, I don't know. I don't know if they work after five o'clock.
Okay, I like all those ideas.
So did we have a concrete plan for what you were talking about with diverting traffic onto local streets? Like, what's, I share your concerns, but I guess what's our next step?
Well, I, I'm, I guess maybe I could use a little clarification about what we're doing here in terms of this Part III. I mean, my understanding is we're supposed to create a document that identifies the level of significant impacts that we've identified through the earlier parts of the EAF and then come to a determination about whether or not we have, they have all been properly and sufficiently mitigated or removed, or whether or not they haven't, either through lack of information or need for something else and we have to then acquire an EIS.
You're doing much of that, but in slightly different sequence. You have a part two to identify some moderate or important impacts. The seeker process needs to then, part three. Part three is for you to provide a reasonable elaboration for the determination. The determination of the EIS is required, or to be determined that it's not. You take those impacts, evaluate the magnitude, the importance, the likelihood, and the seeker, I sent you a section from the seeker work, considering the EAF and how you apply the making the determination of significance, and I think it's fair to say it's like a good, put just enough in, and think of that, and see what comes out, what you think is right. Not everyone is going to agree with you, but the important point from the seeker standpoint is that you have looked at those impacts and obtained a reasonable elaboration for that determination. It's not that somebody else might have gone this way or that way, but you have a record, supported by the record and a reasonable explanation for your conclusion. So you can have a large impact that does not rise to the level of significance. You can look at things outside of property, whether the impact is confined to it, considering property, reasonable scope, and try to put all that together into your recipe for what you're cooking, whether it's the, the, the problem. If you're reasoning and supported by the record, then it's reasonable, and then say reasonable way to see the determination of the EIS. I can't tell you what your determination should be, I can tell you what process you want to do. So when you talk about looking at part three and making the determination of significance, there are intervening steps that you're going to go through and the information you consider and the significant judgment.
So my concerns, I'll use transportation as an example, is I think in some cases the conclusions that are written in this draft, I don't agree with. I don't think that there's necessarily sufficient mitigation in certain instances and I'm happy to elaborate on those which I've annotated. In other cases, I don't think we have enough information to actually, that we haven't looked at the full scope of impacts, and that was what I pointed out by my concern about traffic on local roads. Since that wasn't even addressed prior to going through the EAF, then that's a deficiency that I see that, I guess then as a board, if there's enough agreement, then my, I mean, if the board doesn't, majority doesn't agree with me, then obviously that doesn't move forward. If there is, then I guess it's a question of whether we do that before we complete seeker or whether we do that, you know? Well, I mean, you always do it before you complete seeker, but, but whether it will, how we will do that, how we'll address those.
Well, in some cases, you need information for the determination. In some cases, you can look at the range of potential impacts that could result, and you can determine that the information that you do have is sufficient. You never have the perfect choice.
Sure.
You never have everything you need, but you can have enough. And that's basically what we're looking at. Did you look at the impact? Did you follow through and apply the seeker standards? Right, and one of the reference points that we utilize is the seeker criteria of significance. About 500 projects here. If you have something in the house, it's going to have 90 or 100 projects, you do know it's not going to have 500. But that's not the end of the discussion.
Sure.
You will get more than 90 or 100 spaces. So be in the context, you will get all effects, the circumstances of that particular project. For example, the seeker work with the Jordan units of health, it's a difference of the scheme proposed in New York City, or what's being proposed in John Depp, which has a total population of 250, so. So the context is important as well. And you don't come out with a bright line, you don't come out and say, it is always a primary declaration, for example, the England Declaration, you do not some of the, lots of all these tracks, the other route being the way through, which is what the part three is directed at. So I think your first, maybe what you need to do is go through, sign what you have enough information about. That's what we've done with part four, for example, the context for the funding statement. So we deal with the sections where it's more or less black and white. And you can look through and you can say, okay, the impact on John Depp is not an issue. You've done that to some extent already when you've gone through the part two, but now you're going through the next step and say, we were concerned about this, we said it might be a moderate impact. We have enough information to say, although it's moderate, it's not going to last long enough. And then when you're left, when you're left with all the things that are potentially going away. And then the question is, given the information that you do have, what else would you put out or which could, I mean, pose of that issue? And can you get?
Okay.
So it's going to be some stuff that you need from that different information.
Okay, so it seems like, I agree with Michael, where because I've missed two meetings now, there's some issues I have with part three that I don't feel like we have all the right information or I don't agree with it or whatever. So could we maybe finish this up for tonight? The next meeting, go through part three and go from there? I feel like that's what we're supposed to do tonight.
Well, possibly too, if you could have a technical meeting with Dave and someone who has a draft of what the issues in terms of the board's CUD, you certainly would spend a lot of time on that.
I mean-
Together and try to parse that out offline so we can have this.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I could even just send an email and then we could just, I don't know. Yeah. Just like Michael did, annotated document.
And we could need to get some application of some of the impacts of the software we fill.
Yeah, that would certainly help.
I would agree with you, the federal issue is something that we have to work on, but there's all the other areas too.
Yeah.
And from the outfits' point of view, the board's been going over the part three, this is now probably the fourth meeting, so, so I'm hoping that-
I feel-
As a board, you kind of get together and figure out the process and how you're going to do this.
I would be happy to.
Yeah.
You, at the last meeting, you had mentioned, I raised the issue about segmentation and you responded, and part of your response was that you were, and Dave, were going to put together an introduction that consolidated all of the issues where, all of the places where that came up. where that came up. Have you done that yet?
No, yes, we've talked, we're making progress.
Okay.
We're identifying the area of the applicant's mission where those issues have been discussed.
Okay.
Dave and I are trying to quantify that.
Okay.
So you can see what the impact is of the actual actions being proposed, and the additional impact will result from the, in there.
Okay, that's great.
Hopeful we can have that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so I wonder if at the next meeting, maybe we could just even, I feel like we could talk about it amongst ourselves, because it's our document, part three. You know, I don't know, it could be here, I don't know if we need to have a whole, another discussion, because I think you're right, we need to finish crafting our document. I agree, this has gone on a long time. For me personally, I, well, my mom died, so I haven't been around, but I'm, you know, here we are. So, yeah, I don't know why I mentioned that, I'm sorry. Felt bad for not doing my job. Okay.
Well, Gustav, could you put your issues down? I know you've had some emails, could you consolidate those?
Not in an organized way, so, yeah. I think within the next two weeks I can do that.
That'd be really helpful to know, to be able to be prepared for that.
Got it.
And if anyone else has issues that, you know, the same issues as tonight, I mean, just flag them for us, so we know that it's got to be resolved.
Thanks.
I really sort of see over in the court.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't believe we would have seen in two weeks, or did we have, talking amongst ourselves in two weeks? Personally, I think if you get information about the Phil, if there's a consensus of a ranging here, then you have some better information about the impact, the production of impact, the results from that, all of that can then be wrapped into a EAF discussion. Hopefully, you can come back with something useful. As for our specifications, you could have done a file, and you could be, we could get something from your engineers.
Oh, I'll let Dave and you go.
Sounds like Dave's saying you need a little bit more than, I can't, I have a phone, so we can get it going.
So, I think we'll, it took two weeks, I think we should probably be more. Okay, well, what I would ask is that, that we are on the agenda for the next meeting, and if, you know, and then I can speak to your attorney and see how much progress it will be.
We'll put you on for, that would be February 8th, and a backup position for February 22nd. We, do we have a meeting on the 22nd, or is that President's State?
Is it scheduled to be in March?
For a workshop, so.
Yeah, it is listed as a workshop, maybe.
Looks like the 15th is first.
I think President's Day is 15th.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, very good, thank you. Now, Pete's over, next up. Now, in our last meeting, we had a motion for a vote on the neg deck, and we didn't get any, a second to the motion. I think one way we might proceed is, it's just sort of a straw poll here, is this, without getting into neg deck or not, is, are we contemplating approving this?
Contemplating what?
Contemplating approving this in terms of steep slope or subdivision.
Oh, wow.
Or, or even if we pass a neg deck, is it not going to apply anyway? Just to clarify, to go on about that a little bit, if you're not taking action, you don't have to apply the secret. To be in the last time, what we were in a discussion about the motions that were made, there's still, there's still nothing added to the line. As to what the board is, the term about the project is up, which you consider denial to be affordable, or if you have insufficient information, and if you should consider that part three, a little bit more than you have opportunity for that tonight. So, if it is something where the board is commended, with individual concern about whether or not it's going to apply with the standards, whether it's steep slope, or the subdivision standards, it may be more efficient use of time to continue on the work track. If it is something where you just didn't have enough information, you want to consider, you want to review, and this is, you had that opportunity, you can proceed forward with considering whether to, what actually you do want to take on. So, I thought it would be helpful just to put that on the table.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak very briefly on those exact points? Just to sort of coalesce where we got to last time, and certainly if you're going to consider any of the actions that were just discussed, if I could, on the applicant's behalf, just kind of bring together where I think the record places us now. The record of the matter reflects a history of opposition comments suggesting that the steep slopes and the elevation of this site in relation to certain neighboring properties should lead to a presumption of adverse impacts as a result of the proposed development. It's been our position that the science and the, and the conditions on the ground, we never really supported that conclusion in the first place. There are existing drainage patterns and other maintenance issues on off-site properties that we think are really the culprit on these perceived issues. And everything, all the mitigation possible on behalf of the applicant, we believe, is on their side, has been proposed. Nevertheless, the applicant, and we had an approved DOH septic system on this site. Nevertheless, based on the comments of the board, the public, that system was redesigned. Substantial data about the drainage patterns and our, how we were going to deal with runoff on our site was submitted to the board. And again, DOH will have to approve that system, they approved the last system, we think they'll approve this system, but that would clearly be a condition of any approval, and either will or they won't. The stormwater and drainage issues are mitigated so far as it's within the applicant's power to do. And we think that if you closely, the board closely examines Mr. Klausser's comments to date, and even the comments of the landlord who expressed concerns, we really think that the record does reflect exactly what we said. The concern is not with whether or not we've mitigated the condition on our property, it's A, whether or not the system that's proposed is properly protected against catastrophic failure, and B, we think, again, if you really carefully look at the comments, you really hear about existing conditions and existing maintenance issues on other properties that lead to a perceived problem that we are not contributing to, and I believe the record suggests strongly, through engineering and science, we will actually approve, insofar as we have anything to do with those problems. So, to cut to the chase on where I think we are, Mr. Klausser's comments in the part three that you, that was before you last time, and I hope you'll consider this, identifies the issue as a moderate potential impact. It also, I think, properly identifies that impact as being present only if unmitigated. We have offered to mitigate that issue, to mitigate that potential impact, in two ways today, and I have a third to propose tonight, which I hope will put the issue to rest. The first is we've offered to make, put a covenant in the deeds that will result in any owner who purchases these properties knowing in the chain of title that they have an obligation to maintain that system. That will put them on notice of what the system is and what they have to do to maintain it. Second, we've offered to put in place a mitigation plan that makes very clear what ought to be done. We've also offered to write that commitment in such a way that the town has enforcement rights. Now, last time, there were concerns about whether the town wanted that, whether it would require the town to take on obligations, or buy equipment that they don't currently have, or have an expertise that they don't currently have. That is not the case, because it would allow the town to contract out any of that work to a contractor with that equipment and expertise if they needed to, and charge that cost back to the landowner if they failed to comply, and it would provide for inspections, so that you wouldn't just be talking about, because I understand the neighboring landowners, although I do not think they need be so concerned about it, if it were to catastrophically fail, the fact that somebody could come and fix it would be of some comfort, but you'd still have the issue, right? So the idea would be that it would also provide for periodic inspections, so that that wouldn't have, wouldn't have a catastrophic failure. Last, I would, I am proposing on the applicant's behalf tonight that we would bar that obligation. Simply put, I, I think, as I've said before, this property, because of its grade, would require a steep slope permit, even without a subdivision application for any development. I would submit to you that denial on these grounds amounts, is tantamount to a regulatory taken. But more importantly and more proactively, this board has done its job. We've got on the record a, a, an overdesigned system for this unique site, protections for the town, protections for the neighboring landowners that go well beyond typical protections in an as-of-right subdivision, where any septic system at a neighboring property might fail, in recognition of the unique aspects of this property, and frankly, the proper protections for this owner and tax pay rights as well. It's an excellent balance, the board has done its job, and I would submit to you, ask you respectfully to consider the part three tonight. If you need more time to consider it, obviously, we've been here a long time, you know, if you, if you need a little more time, if you need it to be modified in some way, please take that time. But I would ask that the board close the secret process and approve the applications. Thank you for the time, I know you've been here a long time.
Okay, I've been thinking a lot about this application, because we've literally been looking at it for years, and here's my big master statement on it. It's really gut-wrenching to me as a small business owner and as a homeowner, because I feel like it's a, it's a conflict between these two things. Someone who has, I don't know if he has a small business, I don't know, but, you know, someone who's bought this land, and people who live in these homes. I think, one, it illustrates how our board is kind of disorganized and need to work on it, because I feel like this has been so, such a long drawn-out process, and I feel really, it's been, I'm sure, a money sink for both sides, and I think that's not ideal. But I feel like, I couldn't currently, I don't feel like I could vote to approve this project, and I also don't feel like having more information, it's, it would be useful, we have gotten seas of information, and you're right, you've put, the applicant has put in so much time and so many plans, and I really think that both sides, I don't think anyone's trying to swindle anyone. I think the applicant is just trying to make good on this property that he bought, which, you know, is a, is a challenged piece of property. But I feel like what it, what it speaks to, I mean, we could do a positive declaration, do a full EAF and get more information, and, but we've, I mean, I don't, I'm not saying where we should go, I'm just throwing out some thoughts, but I feel like what, if, it seems, it seems to me that if we even think a little bit that there's a possibility that this project could ruin a whole neighborhood, which it really seems like it has a high likelihood of, even with all the mitigation and all of the procedures put into place and all the maintenance issues and the deed and all of this, I just would feel terrible thinking that we approved this project, and, you know, and I don't think it's the applicant's fault, they didn't create water runoff, you know, if anything, it's SUNY New Palace's fault, we all know that. But I, I don't know where to go from here, because everyone is just pouring money and time into this, and it's taking forever, and those are my thoughts. Ta-da!
George, I don't exactly understand what you were saying before in terms of, I think I missed part of your first sentence. So your, your question was, your comment was about completing seeker with respect to the application, if the board and Lyle sort of predicated, was kind of suggesting that we get a sense of the board's feeling about the application before we've completed seeker? I've never quite been in this situation before.
The question, the question was, whether you have that, no action, because your board members basically have concerns about the project period, and you have not. I was in.
Oh, I see.
I was in for I, I just had a sense.
Oh, all right.
I'm just, I thought it would be helpful to have a discussion about, well, now this is an approval project.
So, I see. I mean, the reason that I didn't make, the reason I didn't make a second was, it was my first meeting, and there was no indication prior to sitting down at the table that we were going to be handed a part three EAF for this, and I'm never going to make a decision about something when I'm handed something at the table and expected to vote on it. So that, that's just a principle. Even if I totally felt one way or the other at the time, I can't, I can't do that. I need to have this information in front of me in time to digest it. So that was my, I can't speak for anybody else about that. But I was also a little discomfited by the idea that, as, as I believe the chair proposed at that time, was that we could, he seemed to say to the applicant, we could, if we neg, if we do a negative declaration, that doesn't mean we're approving the project. And I feel like if we've, is that, is that, I guess, I guess lawyers will agree to disagree about that?
No, no, this has been determined by, there's case law, we need a case law.
Okay.
Plantinghorn.
Okay.
What would be the next step, then?
Well, basically, what you're doing when you do the neg deck, you decided that this requires an EIS.
Right.
That's a step along the way, and if you determine it's not necessary, you can then go on to consider the merits of approval action that you have.
Okay.
EIS, you said it does not approve an action, it doesn't.
No, I understand that, but, but are you contradicting yourself if you say that the EAF says this has a significant impact, but we're not going to learn anything new from an EIS?
No, that's basically what you look at the level of significance and say, this doesn't rise to significance, it doesn't involve a thousand cars, or it doesn't involve 10 acres of land that's reserved. So it's not something where you, it's not inherently inconsistent to say, we're not doing an EIS, but you know what, this has significant, significance in the term of art. This has severe impacts upon surrounding properties, and when you look at the subdivision standards, or when you look at the steep slope standards, that's not something that's acceptable, for that reason, we would deny it. So it's, the distinction between being this significant effect that requires a study in order to move forward, or just whether there is an impact that falls under either the steep slope or the subdivision standard, that requires a shootout one way or the other. In the Mahoney case, the board made a negative determination with respect to this, it's a three-lot subdivision with access to a spring down road. The problem with that particular form of access, flooding events, there's four feet of water on that street, and even though these houses could be raised above the floodplain level, the issue with that was access, especially by emergency services. So the board made a negative declaration to consider the seeker standard subdivision standard, and will. standard, and why those, and had to deny the application.
My mind just exploded that you could do a neg deck and then deny something.
Well, and if I, if I may, I think that, and this year, when I think you actually spoke to this in your statement, the neg deck or the determination of significance is a, is a conclusion by the board that it has conducted a legally sufficient environmental review. It doesn't, it doesn't lead inexorably to any particular result, as, as your attorney has said, then you consider the merits of the application in the context of your code requirements. The other thing that you said that I think is really useful, and again, against the backdrop of what George just talked about, I would really, frankly, I think it's either neg deck or denial. A pos deck in this case, there's, I think everyone would agree that the, that the issue that we're struggling with, the issues that we're struggling with are pretty narrow. It's about runoff, it's about potential impact to neighboring properties in the event of failure of the system. As I think you suggested, you could do a pos deck on this. I mean, you are all familiar enough with that. We're, we're not doing an alternative, this board doesn't need an alternative study, it doesn't need a traffic study, it doesn't need, you know, a noise study. The question is, do you have enough information to make an environmental determination? And I would strongly suggest that you do. Now, I'm, you get to decide what that is, but I, I really beg you to, to draw the conclusion that an EIS is not one of those conclusions. A pos deck in this case, I just think is entirely out of bounds, and frankly, as I said, I think it's either neg deck or deny. But, again, that's.
So, okay, so if we make a determination of significance and hypothetically, if it's a positive declaration that we make, then there's a scoping session in which we can confine the particulars of the EIS as narrow as we care to do, correct? I mean, if we say, based on the, based on the EAF, if the only impacts are discussed are things that are here that have to do with items 10 and 11 here, which have to do with erosion, flooding, drainage, and possible hazards to human health, it would be inconsistent to then require a traffic study. So the, I presume that you don't start over based on your determination, you use your EAF as the basis to then create what it is an EIF, EIS requires. On the other hand, and so, my only concern, but you seem to feel that it's not a concern I need have, is that, that we have to have some basis for legally defending our decision about this. And if, based on what I'm reading from this evaluation of the Part III, I have substantial concerns. I, I honestly don't think I'll learn anything new as a result of an EIS. However, I want to make sure that we don't need that as a basis for creating a legally defensible basis for our decision, and you're.
Well, if you, if you identify a significant adverse environmental impact, arguably it would bolster a budget. But when you look at the criteria of significance, when you look at the guidance provided by DC and FERC, when you look at the nature of what's a moderate or a large impact even, I don't see this one fitting in with the pos deck track. I see this being a local.
I feel.
It's obviously important to be joining property owners, but it's not something which rises to the level of regional concern, it's not involving characteristics of cider neighboring properties that are endangered species. The environmental resources, the environmental issues that are at stake are not the drivers for your determination. Compliance with the standards, I think, is where you really do have some need to profit your potential. And I don't, I don't think doing an EIS isn't inherently defensible with reasonable elaboration. Based on reasonable elaboration, if demonstrable, connecting the dots for that determination is really going to add anything to the deck.
Okay. Thanks.
And again, if I may, I don't think there's really been any discussion on part of the board about whether or not the mitigation measures in connection with the covenant, the opportunity for the town to enforce it and inspect it, and tonight's proffer that we would even bond it. I, I still think there's a real absence in the record of, of a defense for the position that there's, there's an unmitigated risk here. I, I just, I'm not sure what aspect of, I mean, if the system works, the neighbors are protected. What more can this applicant do? And I wouldn't even say, that's not even the right way to say it because it's conceivable that a person could do as much as they could do, and it still wouldn't be enough. But I'm suggesting to you that the bases are covered, and I haven't really heard any discussion for the way in which that's not the case.
Well, I think what we're saying is it is what you said, you are doing as much as you can do, and it's still not enough because of the nature of.
But in what respect is it not enough?
The earth. Because we can't say definitively that it, it's mitigatable.
But if that's the standard, you can't approve anything.
Yeah, I hear you.
Well.
I mean, that's not a standard, it's not a legally defensible standard, that's something we can see the way happen, or that we can't rule out the possibility.
So my concerns are that, so, so my impression, let me step back a minute. My impression is that you've got two lot, you have a, you have a piece of property that the applicant is asking to subdivide into two lots from one, and as a result is, finds it necessary to do what I would consider extraordinary measures to build single-family homes. And, and as a result, an enormous amount of responsibility is placed on owners in perpetuity. And we can sit here at the table and talk about bonds and the responsibility of the town, and I still am not comforted enough by that because I know from years ago, having been on the Environmental Commission, simply giving a conservation easement that the town is required to review once a year can be problematic. And so asking the town to take on a level of responsibility that ensures that downgradient neighbors are sufficiently protected 40 years from now, when none of the people who are discussing this are necessarily in, you know, living in any of those homes or owning any of those homes, that's not okay. Our responsibility, as I see it as a planning board member, is to consider the applicant's concerns, but also consider the context and the other people who live in this community already or might live in these places in the future. And what I've heard you say, that is, you as, and the applicant, representatives, the engineer and so forth, and what I've heard from our engineer is that this is an extraordinary amount of things that are required.
I would disagree with that characterization. It's not an extraordinary maintenance plan. I think what's been said is that because of the slope, it can be difficult to, it's more challenging.
But to, but to put that responsibility on a homeowner or indirectly through the town to monitor the homeowner's obligations, whether you put a covenant in place or whether you put a bond in place, it still falls on individual human beings. We don't know who they are, we don't know, and even, whether it's owner occupied or non-owner occupied, I still think that that's a, that's a pretty high bar, and.
Can I just say a procedural thing? I think you're bringing up really great points, but I think you're absolutely right that we haven't had a lot of board discussion, and I feel like we're kind of debating with you, or maybe we should.
Well, no, I'm putting this out in response to this. The other thing is that I don't think it's a taking, and I can't definitively say this because we haven't seen it, but it's my understanding that if it remains as a single lot, that the potential for building a single-family home with a septic and stormwater system that is far less complicated and doesn't require the level of responsibility for current, for future homeowners and the town is possible. So we are not depriving the applicant or a future property owner of their right. This is my understanding without seeing an application and having it analyzed. But I, in that respect, I feel like there is an alternative, and it's not an unfair alternative to consider.
I think a court would support you on that.
Beg your pardon?
I think a court would support you on that.
Thank you.
I think the land would not.
I think I can show you where one single-family house could be placed, and there's a place for a septic system that would meet the Health Department criteria. I can't show you a place on the property that isn't steep slope that wouldn't take this extraordinary measure to mitigate. And I just would say also that I took the town DPW out there to take a look at it. The town has no interest in maintaining this or coming to the rescue of anyone, and they have no obligation to do so. So we're left with what happens here with the bond, who's going to maintain it? That's my.
It's the same question that's asked when you do a maintenance bond on a road, and I'm sure it's answerable.
Well, except that the road's taken for a public purpose.
Okay.
This is, this is not.
It could be worked out. I don't know.
Well, if there is a public purpose in the town, believe that what's in the street right now, something, something could be worked out. That is not a case. This is a case in which you're saying the private property wants to subdivide its property, and in order to facilitate that private action, you're going to post a bond, you're going to put covenants in place, you're going to have the town with the right of enforcement. But that's not a case in which I see a clear reason why the town should be.
Then, then the town doesn't have to be, we offered it. We're also offering to make it a covenant in the deeds and to bond the obligation. The town doesn't have to take it, we offered it. That's fine.
Yes, but you're offering it because of the nature of the property and the nature of the stormwater devices that need to be installed to accommodate stormwater and the potential for any significant damage.
And I think it's an extraordinary measure to offer, and I don't think we need to do it to make an approvable project, and I think it's, denial is inappropriate. But we're offering those things to try to mitigate the concerns. I mean, I, you know, again, I, I get it, I still.
Well, well, I wonder if we should have a vote.
On what?
Well, Seeker?
Yep, I have to do that first.
I think my feeling is it's a, it's a highly engineered system, it's a precarious, it would probably work, put in exactly as they engineer it and maintain exactly. And if only four bedrooms in the house were occupied, in other words, they were using like the amount of water that the Department of Health would estimate, or say, I don't know exactly what it is, it's probably 100 gallons per person in the, in the septic tank if it winds up with a different number of people living there and more water going into the system. I don't know how, I don't know how it reacts, I don't know how, how much overage is in the design. I think that any water that you put down has got to come out somewhere.
I do not think the record supports the proposition that even in the case of catastrophic failure, drainage happens here related to operation, my client's property really has the result that the board seems to be presuming it will have. I, I, look, I respect, obviously, we respect the concerns of the public and the board, or we wouldn't have hung in there as long as we have and tried to design this. I just don't think the record reflects a pos deck. I don't think it reflects the denial, but we're not there yet. And I do think you have enough information to make a determination of significance and then proceed to considering whether the application should, should not be approved. I'm not suggesting you do that, see, but as I think a couple members of the board have suggested, a pos deck isn't going to give you more information than you already have on, on this particular issue. And so I think you're ready for that at least, and, and I would sincerely ask you to do that, to act on it.
So Lyle had suggested a straw poll, and I think the reason he did is because you probably wouldn't be happy with a neg deck and then getting the project denied. And I think, I think that's the point, right?
I wouldn't be happy with it, but I do think it's an appropriate procedural step, and I, and I, so.
So the discussion, the discussion, I think warrants merit on how, how we perceive of the project going forward, just to stop the bleeding from both sides right now, and I think that would be helpful.
Are you ready for a vote?
Hold on.
Is there a motion?
Can I? Please do. You can make a motion, second, because I have a point of information for you.
Is there a motion to find neg deck in this project?
So moved.
I'll second.
So second, any other discussion?
The point of information is when you, maybe, I think, it's your being what I've heard before, you must apply the seeker prior to approving an action, and you're not required to apply the seeker to deny an action. So if you believe it is possible, and you wish further discussion of whether or not to approve or to approve with conditions, which is your right, then I would say neg deck would be a useful next step. If you take a neg deck, it doesn't prohibit it from denying, but it's one more step in the process. Not necessarily.
If you are resolved at this time to agree to deny the application, but again, I, I would suggest to you that is legally and logically premature, and I would ask that this motion was to be made in second and be voted on. As your attorney has said, it doesn't, even if it's adopted, it doesn't preclude you from approving or denying the application, and I would ask that you please do that.
But what I would do is prepare a resolution for your consideration at the next meeting setting for the basis, and you would, if that's the, I think, take action. So I think if you direct me to do that, I would do it.
With regards to Seeker?
With regard to Seeker.
Yeah, I mean, I would go on the record indicating that we have a Part III, which I generally agree with the analysis end that's presented here. Excuse me, I'm supposed to talk into the microphone. And as, basically, just to say again, in summary, what I said before, there are, I believe, this, in order for this to be effective, it requires a substantial, highly engineered system. The steep slopes are of great concern, and in order for the system to work adequately, as Lyle pointed out, only under the best of circumstances. And I am concerned that in the future, that you can't necessarily depend on the property owners going well into the future to be able to maintain this, especially since it's clear the town is not interested in, in supporting this, the suggested mitigation that you've proposed. And the only reason that I'm willing to consider a negative declaration is based on the comments from our attorney, that I don't feel that we're necessarily going to obtain any new information as a result of an EIS that we don't already have, and that, that creating a negative declaration is not in itself grounds for then approving the project, and it is defensible if it's, if it's properly done.
So the resolution would set forth the criteria of significance to apply to any determination of significance, and basically, it will explain, provide the reasonable elaboration for why this does not rise to the level of significance required per creation of an EIS, notwithstanding the issues that are noted. Notwithstanding the issues that are noted with respect to the specific impacts, it may arise elimination of this property, attorney property in existing condition of the way that the trade issues near slopes and the accuracy of the structures that would be required in order to provide some assurance about trade issue.
So I, I know we have a motion on the floor, but wouldn't it be better to have your resolution before we actually vote?
You could directly prepare a resolution.
Right.
opposed to voting on it. Before then, a negative declaration, you can have it ready for you at the next meeting.
I mean, I don't, I apologize because I would feel a lot more comfortable having something from our attorney, so can...
We need a motion to do that? No.
Well, but we have a motion on the floor first, so we'd have to withdraw, we'd have to agree to withdraw the motion that's on the floor. We have a motion in a second, so we have to...
Or you could amend it to directly, or a resolution consideration.
Okay, well, so...
For the time screen.
I did, I mean, I moved it. So I respectfully request that we amend the motion to direct our attorney to prepare a resolution for a negative declaration for PB 2014-02.
Based on the discussions?
Based on the discussions that we've had and withhold voting until we have the resolution.
Fourth February 8th, you can have it...
Second again.
Okay.
So that's the motion.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Could it take a five minute break?